All right, good evening ladies and gentlemen, 7:00 PM. Let me call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for Tuesday, August 7th, 2018. Let me remind everyone who will address the board to make sure you sign in on the clipboard that's on this table and make sure the microphones are turned on. You speak clearly into them so the folks at home can hear you. By way of announcement, our next planning board meeting after tonight will be August 21st, 2018, 7:00 PM, in this Matthew Thornton room. Tim, let me first put Nelson into a voting position in for Mike, and with that, Tim, Planning and Voting Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Couple of things this evening. I'll start with Student Transportation of America. As you know, their facility on DW Highway is nearing completion. They have now entered into a situation where their lease on Star Drive is up. They were not able to keep the buses there. They're temporarily parking the buses over at Merrimack High School right now. As they work to complete the site prior to the opening of school, there's a possibility that not everything, primarily the as-built site plan following completion of all the improvements, will be completed in time for us to sign off on a CEO. So, the request from STA, and we do have Greg Stinson from STA here tonight if you have any specific questions, is whether or not the board is comfortable with staff allowing them to put up a financial guarantee to ensure that any and all incomplete improvements, including the as-built plan, could be done with a financial guarantee that would allow us to sign off and have the monies available to finish any work that's not completed.
And I would let him go ahead and move the buses over?
Correct.
Thank you for that, Tim. Knowing that this was going to be coming up tonight, I did take a ride through the site just a few minutes ago on my way over. There's some landscaping and grass and trees and things to do, but the site looks pretty good. It's pretty well finished, and parking lot stripes are in, and there's a little bit of an erosion situation between the two properties between them that they've got to fix, but or at least, I don't know.
Yeah, a lot of that's due to just the unusually heavy rain we've had in some of the recent storms.
Yeah, strange weather. But there's no safety issues, there's no open pits, there's no open construction going on that I think would be an issue with the buses over there, so.
We wouldn't bring it to the board if we didn't feel comfortable handling it in this manner, as long as we have the boards okay.
My personal opinion is let them have their buses over there. With that, what, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask the question, who's going to set the value of the bond?
We will work with STA, and they will provide an estimate for all the incomplete work, and then we'll review that and ensure that there's sufficient funds.
On that basis, Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion, I'd like to make a motion that we grant the STA request to have a bond to enable them to use the site prior to completion of the landscape.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion? Second by Nelson.
You said completion of the landscaping, but you make completion of the project.
Of everything.
Well, it's the landscaping.
It's primarily, yes.
But he needs to have a CEO before you can.
Yeah, well, yes. Completion of the as-built.
Allow financial guarantee to cover any unfinished items per the approved plan.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for putting me right.
Thank you for correcting the language for the motion, Tim. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 6-0-0.
There you go, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you for continuing to support, appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next, next item I have, on your desks, you should have a little 11-by-17, this is PortNetto Boulevard, proposed office. This is the site that my box of New England is currently finishing up. The, in order for, again, this is another certificate of occupancy question for the board. This one's a little different, however. In the little cloud red box towards where it says to Acer Reb, the Sunset Maple Tree, there's a short, about 14-foot section of sidewalk in the public right-of-way that the Public Works Department has specifically requested the board's guidance as to whether or not they can omit constructing that small segment in front of the property. The onsite sidewalk, as shown on this plan, has been completed, is in place. However, the concern of Public Works is because this is such a short section of sidewalk that has no nearby sidewalk anywhere in the vicinity, that this small piece would wreak havoc on the potential plow issues during the summer, during the winter, because you're not going to notice that that curb is there, particularly given the history in the area. This is not something that we took lightly, and again, because the planning board did require this as part of their approval and bring it to your attention to see what your thoughts are in terms of allowing them to, allowing us and Public Works to sign off without that being completed.
Thank you, Tim. My sense of this is that it's a pretty de minimis change, and that if Public Works supports it, I think, you know, maybe it's not the hardest thing in the world to do to avoid a little bit of curb, but let's, you know, I support the relief that they're looking for. Others? Nelson?
Oh, yeah. I went and took a look at it, and I would agree with not building it at this time. It just, what they've done, they've built the sidewalk coming out to the street, the piece that go, runs the east and west, if you will, and it's just that little northern piece that we're talking about, north-south piece, and it really wouldn't make sense, it would be a hazard to plows if it was done with curbing. So, I would, I would support this motion.
And the reason that would require curb is there's not enough space within the right-of-way there to have a grass panel between the travelway and where the sidewalk would need to be located. So, based on that, the only type of sidewalk that would be permissible in that would be one with a vertical granite curb.
Which someday, maybe, we'd have along the whole line.
Yeah.
Without, just that little, just that little piece there would be a hazard to plowing.
Excellent. So, is anybody willing to make a motion?
I thought Nelson did.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't, but I will. I'll make a motion to waiver the.
To grant the relief.
Grant the relief on that, on that one little leg of sidewalk, 14 feet.
Motion by Nelson, second by Alistair, to grant the relief sought by the applicant on this one. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 6-0-0. Tim, what else you got for us?
And the last item I have for tonight is, Public Works is in the process of completing a TAP grant application for, this would be to replace the previous TAP grant that we were awarded for Woodbury Street and DW Highway. Because those monies have been shifted to go to the South Eagan River Trail, the new request is actually to do Woodbury and then Babusak Lake Road. There's a draft letter which I have submitted to Bob for his signature as a planning board letter of support as part of the application, so we just need a consensus of the board that it would be in the board's purview to recommend that and encourage the town to support the, and the DOT to support and grant request for that sidewalk project.
So, the request is that the board issue a letter of support for the proposed TAP grant for Woodbury Street and Babusak Lake Road on the other side of it, up to about the police department, I think it goes.
Down to the library, from the library up to the police department roughly.
But they don't, they don't connect.
Currently, they do not.
They are two separate ones, or you're proposing that they connect?
They would be two separate ones. Two separate parts of the same grant application.
Okay, thank you.
May I just confirm, the, what's the ratio the town has to put in to match it?
20%.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, the board authorizes you to sign the TAP, the letter of supporting the TAP application.
Is there a second? Second by Lynn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 6-0-0. So, have that, we'll sign that later. Tim, anything else for us?
That's all I had for P&amp;Z report, and actually I have an electronic signature, so I think I'm good.
Oh, that's true. You did, the letter that you sent me was already signed by me. It still said draft, but it was already signed.
I can take a watermark out.
Any questions by members of the board for staff?
Along those same notes, I thought we had talked about getting minutes, agendas, backup, et cetera, via our electronic version.
So, we did that for our one meeting in June as a test, test run, I think the June 18th meeting, or whatever the two days.
The second meeting in June was, yeah.
And we haven't taken a pause in one of our discussions to sort of have everybody say what they thought of it and how it went, what we would want to do in the future. So, we tested that idea once, and where we go from here?
If I recall the discussion, yeah, if I recall, the discussion last month was decidedly mixed as to how well that worked.
Yeah, I liked having everything electronically. I think others wanted to have plans on paper because they were more difficult.
Can, can we do both at the moment?
That's up to you guys.
So, if you make an electronic package, instead of emailing that out, could you just post it on the, on the web, and the whole world can have it? I mean, there's nothing in our package, and anybody that wants it can go get it.
I just won't save the trees.
Sure. I'm with you. And then if any planning board member wants to elect not to have a paper package at all, you can.
Mr. Chairman, I would support the, that point, except for, I would still say we want hard copy plans, because the electronic plans were virtually impossible to read even with magnifying glasses. It just doesn't work, the plans. If we are going to contribute on the, something on the plans, we've got to have a copy of the plans, but everything else, yeah, go for it.
I'm with Alistair on that. If we can get plans, hard copy, now, maybe this is too much work for staff?
Not really.
And get the rest of it electronically, I'd be happy to have that.
Come up with an idea. Why don't we set this as an agenda item for discussion and specifically determine what, what specifically we want to do moving forward?
I think that that makes sense, and also, to the extent that our rules or regulations can have the applicants submit electronically directly, so that you guys aren't having to scan in and process.
Correct. That's, that's, that's always, that's the biggest part of it. As long as we get them electronically submitted, it's not a problem.
Sounds like it's a little rough for the night out tonight. Okay, let's, so, put it on a future agenda, let's discuss it.
And my dog.
What's that?
And my dog.
Dog's not going to like that at all either. Mine's got a thundercoat for that. Okay. Any other items for discussion with staff? Okay, seeing none. The next item on our agenda is item three, which is Neighbor Works Southern New Hampshire and the Granite YMCA as the applicant and owner. Continued review for consideration of a site plan to construct a 45-unit multifamily development. The parcels are located at 315 Daniel Webster Highway and the R4 Residential and Oxford Conservation Districts and portions of the 100 and 500-year flood hazard areas, tax map 44, lot 431 and 43. And this item was continued from our July 17th, 2018 planning board meeting. Tim, where do we stand?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your package, you'll find memo dated August 2nd for myself. As you recall, back on July 17th, there were two separate applications in front of, one for a lot line adjustment, which the board granted conditional final approval for that night, and then secondly, for the site plan for the 45-unit multifamily development. The peer review comments were received, sent to the applicant, and they did submit revised plans back to the town on July 31st. From our initial review, it appears that the vast majority of those peer review comments have been satisfactorily addressed, and we're recommending that those be verified through the final conditions of approval review following a conditional approval by the board. There were two primary issues raised by the board back on July 17th, one being the grading of Angelo Drive as it approaches the project, based on some comments from Public Works, and then the secondary emergency access that was requested by the fire department. The initial grading has been revised for Angelo Drive, that I'm sure the applicant will present here tonight, and a access to Daniel Webster Highway directly from the project has been proposed. Though the fire department would have preferred a connection to Island Drive, they are okay with the connection to Daniel Webster Highway, provided a couple of things, the width and pavement, as outlined in their proposed conditions, are satisfied by the applicant. They would be okay with that going out to DW Highway. So, based on that and the diligence of the applicant in addressing the comments and concerns from last month, our recommendation would be that the board grant conditional final approval here tonight.
Thank you, Tim. Please introduce yourself and make whatever presentation you'd like, so that we can begin some discussion.
Sure. Good evening. My name's Kevin Anderson with Meridian Land Services.
And I'm Jennifer Vadney with Neighbor Works Southern New Hampshire.
So, as Tim has pointed out, this is a continuation of last month's planning board application. Really quickly, just to bring the board up to speed, last meeting, we discussed the site and drainage in detail. We had a presentation by Rebecca Brown from GPI regarding traffic, which I think was a very thorough report. Board voted on a lot line adjustment and a parking waiver. Both of those were approved, and we were waiting on comments from planning departments, DPW, Water, and from Fuss and O'Neil. Shortly after that planning board meeting, we received all of those comments. To kind of bring up some of the noteworthy ones, water department, they've issued a water availability letter. They went out for a third-party review to Underwood. They had a number of more construction-related comments, fixture counts and fire suppression flow rates, but those are really construction-type items for building permits. Fire department, as Tim has pointed out, had requested a second means of egress, which I will go into more detail on in a minute. I did meet with Captain John Manuelli a couple of times to review several design options, and we ultimately agreed upon the connection to Daniel Webster. Following up with that, I met with DPW, Dawn Twamala, where we reviewed the second means of access into the site. She was concerned about site distance. We did an evaluation, and we can make the full 100 feet of site distance. I have preliminary plans already drafted up, and I've already informed her of that. She did bring up Angelo Drive, the grade adjustments to Angelo Drive. I had done some grading a little further up towards the entrance of Angelo Drive. I've pulled that back. In addition, there was some comments about snow plow removal. There was some concern about Angelo and turning onto Willow. We've worked with DPW, and we're actually in agreement to extend an easement and an access all the way down to the sewer access, which I'll point more in detail in a minute, and provide a turnaround there for plow trucks. That way, they don't have to back into a private facility at all, and they can just drive right by it. Lastly, comments by Fuss and O'Neil, they were largely minor in nature. We've addressed thoroughly the ones we could immediately and provided a response letter back to community development. Quickly, I'll go over the design changes. Angelo Drive, I'll zoom in here. We had grading originally going all the way up towards the beginning of Angelo Drive. This is a 3% section of Angelo Drive. I have agreed with Dawn to prevent all modifications to Angelo Drive to be in about this vicinity here. Thus, we're going to keep a nice level platform for vehicles to, you know, start again after coming to a complete stop on Angelo. They pointed out, this lower portion just past Willow Drive gets kind of steep. It's in the vicinity of 7%. I had the ability to raise this portion of the curve here, so we flattened that out to an agreement with DPW. Not drafted up, but done in preliminary, is checking if we can get access all the way down to the sewer easement down here. It's currently a gravel path along the easement behind all of these buildings. We're going to enhance that with a hammerhead turnaround, just so that the plow truck, which is a pickup truck in this case, can turn around. Secondly, probably.
Excuse me, where's the hammerhead?
It's, it hasn't been designed yet. That was our comments that.
But where would it go in?
It'll go in, let me zoom in over here.
Right below the green curve.
Right below the green curve, and turn around right here, which is the access.
Okay, thank you.
Secondly, probably a point of more discussion is the second means of access into the site. Originally, one of my first meetings with Captain Manuelli is, he agreed upon a 16-foot-wide gravel access to Daniel Webster. You'll see that through this location here. In his comments that he's provided to staff and his senior report, he's asked that that be increased to 20 feet and be paved. There will be a gate at both ends of this access road to prevent through traffic, and I am locating the first gate in this vicinity of full fire track lengths off of Daniel Webster, to prevent any sort of, you know, confusion or backup into Daniel Webster. I think at this point, I'd like to turn it right over to the board for comment, and we can go in more detail with what items you would like to discuss.
Thanks. You've pretty well covered the questions that I had about both access roads with, essentially satisfying DPW and satisfying the fire department, as long as they're happy. Personally, I'm happy. The one thing that I remember a discussion about, and I think because we did the parking waiver, you're not necessarily required to show it, but we had a discussion about where you would build extra parking spaces. If it turns out after the place opened, you would, you would decide you needed them. And I've forgotten where that is, or maybe we could have some indication of that on the plan as future parking not to be built, or something like that.
I was hopeful I could pull that up quickly as you were speaking. Give me one more minute, and I'm sure I can get it up.
Yeah, 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 no problem. I'll have it made.
I think it's this one here. Oops. If you recall, where we had the hammerhead turnaround, we were just going to basically put in, I'm sorry, where we had the cul-de-sac turnaround, we were going to just extend hammerhead-type parking in this location.
If it turns out you needed them, you just convert that cul-de-sac into a hammerhead, and that'd be what you needed?
That's exactly what I would do, and I think I have more than enough room to fit parking in this vicinity if needed. I've always got this last unit. I can extend this out another space or two. That would provide me some additional parking spaces.
Okay.
So, there's, there's a few options to meet the minimum requirements.
I would simply state and recommend that if the board does want to see something like this, that it not be part of the actual approved project plan set, but a supplemental piece that we'd put in the project file, because I don't want it to be confused with the actual construction plans, that this is something that would need to be constructed as part of the project.
I mean, we've done in the past where we've had planned designations that say future parking if needed. The only thing, the only reason that I'd want to take care of it is so that if you do decide to build that, there's no question that you've already got our permission to do it, and you don't have to come back here for approval of reconfiguring the parking, and it may never, ever come up, or may come up in 20 years when nobody thinks to look a look in their file.
The problem, again, and I think Kevin can address this as well, is I don't believe the drainage is designed to accommodate the additional, or is it?
It is not designed, but it has been checked for the increased level of pavement in previous area. I had done the checks to make sure the basin I designed was adequate, and that I wouldn't need to come back to revisit drainage.
And I think it's, you, I have a lot of confidence in your experience with your parking. I just want this as sort of a belt and suspenders in case, because we've got a lot of developments around town where you hear people saying, we've only got two spaces and it isn't enough. So, at least there's a chance to do something about it here if you needed to, or some other ones don't. I don't have any other comments or questions about it.
Lynn raised her hand, that's wrong.
No, it's okay.
Lynn, any other comments or questions about this or any other part of the proposal?
Well, so, I see your secondary access, and I, I don't particularly like it any more than I guess the fire department did, although they're willing to accept it. You mentioned putting the gate a far distance away from the intersection to avoid having the fire truck sticking out, but if it's there for an emergency, it's got red lights flashing and people stopped anyway, and if you put the gate down there ways, people are going to not know what that is all about. A 25-foot paved area is going to look like a street.
I'm in complete agreement with you, but it was suggested I put it in that location.
By the fire department, they want it down there?
The, well, not so much the fire department. They like the idea of being able to pull completely off the road. This is something I've run into other communities, and that's what I've been asked to do. It's just something I kind of go along with, but you have a great point that someone could mistake that for a driveway, or try to do a turnaround after they missed some other turning, and it's a valid point.
So, with that in mind, perhaps you could consult with the fire department about the location of the gate, and if they're willing to put it closer to DW Highway, we are too.
Okay.
And if they want it where you put it, I think, you know, it's.
That's it, yeah.
That's where to put it.
But surely, I mean, over and above that, a little sign saying access for fire engines only, or emergency department only, would surely reinforce what's going on, but it's only thought.
Yeah, I think, you know, fire access road, or no-through-street, or whatever you want to put on it, is appropriate signage, no matter where the gate is.
That's belt and suspenders.
Excellent idea. We can put up no turnaround, we can put up fire access, so we can put up several different signs.
Fire access, emergency access only.
Yeah, that's what I would like. I think it would be.
This is a no-brainer. This is, this is something that's just very simple.
You guys worked this out with the fire department.
Just do it.
Okay. Okay. Anything else about the entire application?
Yes. Yes. First of all, the emergency access, this access road that we're talking about now, the one that's shown there, is shown in a slightly different color than paving and the rest of the site, and I wondered if that had some significance or meaning. You've said it's going to be paved, and you've said it's going to be 20 feet wide. Is that one 20 feet wide?
My initial conversation with Captain Manuelli was, he was okay with a 16-foot-wide gravel access road. His recommendations to staff, he changed that to a 20-foot-wide paved access road. We're in agreement with paved. We don't have, I mean, there's less maintenance, long-term maintenance with pavement.
But that's not shown.
That is not shown, because I see.
What is shown is the 16-foot gravel, because that was, at the time it's submitted, what fire had indicated they were looking for.
Yeah, okay, so, there's a significant change there. You're going to have to widen that and change those slopes and so on.
I'd like to clarify with the fire department, typically, an access road can be 16 feet of pavement with two-foot gravel shoulders on either side. We call that a plowable surface. I'd like clarification from the fire department on that. We're in agreement with it. If it's 20 feet, it's 20 feet, and we will make that work.
You can make it work.
Yes.
And still keep these slopes what you have.
Yes, I've got plenty of room to adjust that in there.
And I understand there was going to be another gate on that at the bottom, or at the east end of that access road.
Correct.
And that's not shown on these plans.
Again, similar, this plan was submitted to community development prior to the fire department's recent comments, so that gate will be added to this plan set, and it'll be in this location here.
Okay. Now, somewhere around here is where this extra parking is going to go, is that, you're going to show that on the plan, right? I think that's what the board is.
I, I think that's still a discussion, because I'll be frank, I, with the waiver having already been granted, future parking is a separate section of our regulations that requires different things be put on the plan. Based on the way the waiver was granted, I don't think the applicant is obligated to show anything beyond what they received the waiver for.
Well, maybe he'd like to do that anyway. It would save him headaches in the future, and it was part of the minutes in the discussion that led up to that granting of that waiver. So, I think that's really part of it. I think that was the reason that I voted for the waiver, was because there was, there was an escape route in the future, okay? So, I would like that to be part of the final plan. The recreation area that's down here in the lower right, I guess, northeast corner, what goes in there?
It's really, a lot of times, especially this board, you like to see some sort of community area. It's a lawn area. It's just a space where the tenants can go and enjoy being outside. I like to show that on the plan to show that we've actually put some thought into some sort of recreational activity for the tenants of these spaces.
But there's no amenities included in the plan.
If I may, we've recently done a lot with just simple picnic tables and garden boxes. We've built several garden boxes. We survey tenants, who wants garden boxes, whoever wants one, we'll build for them. And garden boxes would also go in this area.
Yeah. Well, okay, I didn't see anything there. The gates, the, the, let me see here, the, I think that pretty much takes care of me, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent, thank you.
Oh, I know, one other thing. It was supposed to be architectural plans. Were there any architectures submitted with this?
They were a long time ago. I remember seeing when the buildings look up from this.
Yeah, that's what we've had before.
Yeah, but I didn't see it submitted as part of the.
An architectural plan was not submitted as part of this application. These are the building units that are going to be constructed. They're constructed in Londonderry currently. It's the same plan set we're using. I felt that showing you the actual building constructed was sufficient to kind of fulfill your needs of what, what the building is and how it looks.
I'd just like it to be part of the record and part of the plans submitted.
I think that the discussion and the photographs being part of the record kind of are where we're at, but making them go back and do some more drawings to include that in the plan set. I mean, it's, it's not necessarily part of our regulations to require it unless we choose to require it, and we know what the building's going to look like, so.
The only place we're required is if it's an industrial design district. The only place we're required is if it's an industrial design district.
Or a CUP.
These are on file somewhere in the...
Yeah, pictures go where... Anything else by anyone else? Let's open up the floor for any member of the public or abuders who wish to weigh in on the project. Is there anyone that wants to off the board any opinion? Say none, we'll...
Oh, no, the gentleman there.
I'm sorry, come on forward. Come on forward. Let's get you a spot by a microphone and a chance to sign in. You want to, quick comment to send down, or you got to want to sit down at the table? Whatever you like better. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be too quick to see you stand up.
Hello?
Yeah.
Good. My name's Brandon Arp. I live at 329 Daniel Webster Highway, which is the small property abutting that access road, the proposed emergency road.
Okay.
A few questions on that. I'm curious how, how close that road is going to be to my property line.
We'll get the applicant to kind of give us an answer to that once they get a chance to see there. It's just guessing by what it looks like on the screen. You're talking about probably 15 or 20 feet from the property line. I don't know how close that is to your house.
My house is about six feet from the property line.
Yeah.
So, I don't, I don't know if there's any specifics as far as setbacks or variance for a roadway.
No, there is not.
Okay.
Only buildings.
Okay.
Or swimming pools and that sort of thing.
Now, that's a pretty steep drop-off as well. How is the land going to be graded for that? Is there going to be a retaining wall or...
They're not proposing any retaining wall, but I'll get the applicant to answer a little bit better as to what the grading looks like. I think on the plans, it indicated something like three or four percent grade.
Okay.
Up through there. Anything else? Take your time, I'm not trying to rush you.
Sure, thank you, no, no problem. I think that pretty much sums it up, just a few questions.
Thank you, Brandon. Any other members of the public wish to weigh in? Okay, let's close the public hearing and let me have the applicant answer those couple of questions that Mr. Arp presented with respect to how close the driveway will be to his place and a little bit about the slope that you've got there.
I'm estimating approximately 20 feet. Grading will probably be closer to 15 feet from the property line. To expand a little bit on grading, he is correct, it drops right off of Daniel Webster. Fill will be brought in to bring that grade more gradual to like a three to four percent. Particularly in the location adjacent to Daniel Webster, that should be a flat apron, if you will, and then it transitions down. This is a pretty gentle slope after all the grading is done and complete.
How much fill will you have to add near DW Highway? And if you're going to do three-to-one slopes off of that fill, how far will that apron of fill?
As sketched here, these are three-to-one slopes. I don't have a fill quantity. That's not something I have calculated at this time. So, if I'm adding four more feet, you can draw these lines out four more feet and I'll probably be within 10 feet of the property line with fill.
Okay, that helps. So, about 20 feet from the property line or 20 feet from his actual house?
Property line.
So, he's thinking that his house is six more feet from the property line, so 26 total feet from the edge of pavement to...
I'm looking at it here and it looks like it's probably close to 30 something feet.
Yeah, well, it's going to get a little wider because the fire department is going to make them widen the saddle a little bit. Okay, thank you for that. Any other responses that you'd like to give to the gentleman's public testimony?
Basically, that's, I mean, this is a directive of the fire department. I'd still like to bring the width down to 16 feet, but if he's adamant at 20, we can accommodate 20.
Okay. As long as you satisfy the fire department, as far as the planning board goes, I know that there's been quite a few other applications that have had fire access roads and the fire department's width is based on fire trucks with the outriggers out to stabilize. And I don't know, because there's not really close to any buildings where they would try and plant a fire truck, whether they would need all that width, but they've been pretty tight on that requirement for some other projects that have been around. It may be that because you're not very, really close to the building that nobody would put up a ladder truck there or something like that. But again, as far as I'm concerned, and I think it'll be the will of the board, whatever the fire department wants, if they're satisfied, we're satisfied. It does put you in the position that if we grant conditional final approval subject to satisfying conditions from the fire department, if you ultimately do disagree with them and want to have some discussion about 16 or 20 or whatever, we can provide relief for that, but it means you're coming back.
Understood.
And then you've got to convince us to disagree with the fire department, which is a second big hurdle.
Very, which is very difficult.
It can be. So, it does put you on the hook to do whatever it is that they say. Same with the other entrance with the hammerhead thing and making DPW happy with that. If you go with that. Is there any other discussion with the applicant about the proposal in chief? If not, is any member of the board willing to make a motion, one way or another?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
If I can interrupt. I, I don't, I don't mean to derail things, but where are we with the whole parking thing? Because that's something that I'd like some clarification, okay?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we grant approval to this project, conditional final approval, subject to, A, the various points that have been made today, with the exception of following community developers' wish not to have extra parking space indicated. I also draw attention to on the notes from Mr. Thompson dated August the 2nd, item 7A23, sorry, the developer shall purchase the super key block. That's your problem, you've got to provide it. Otherwise, I, we go with, along with all the other points that are in the memo of Mr. Thompson of that date and I therefore would wish to propose we grant conditional final approval.
Okay, Alistair's made a motion to grant conditional final approval subject to all the conditions in the memo and all the ones discussed tonight except for showing future parking spaces on the plan.
I'll second.
Second by Lynn. I would have preferred to see the motion show the extra parking spaces. I agree with Nelson that it's been our practice in the past to do that, so the applicant doesn't have to come back to us for those things. Nevertheless, that's not such a significant point that would have me opposing the motion. Any other discussion?
It is sufficient for me to oppose the motion on that basis, Mr. Chairman. I would much prefer to see the parking spaces shown.
Thank you. Any other discussion? With that in mind, all in favor of, I'm sorry, Lynn, what?
Does the applicant have any problem showing the future parking spaces?
Oh, I do not.
I can make alternate detail.
Then I'd like to propose an amendment that those parking spaces be shown.
Alistair, will you go along with that?
Mr. Chairman, I would like the community development director to voice his opinion.
Please do.
There is, I, I understand that in the past that a parking waiver was, was accompanied by these future parking spaces. In our regulations, as we've amended them since I've been on board the last seven years, we now have a specific section of the regulations dealing specifically with future parking. There are different requirements and different things that go along with that. When the waiver was granted to reduce the required number of parking spaces from the 100 and whatever were required down to 100, the obligation for the applicant to do that doesn't exist. My, again, I have no problem having the, the sheet within the file, but I don't think it belongs in the plan set.
Then I withdraw my amendment.
Wait, hang on a second, I want to know more about this. A couple of things. First, in terms of granting a waiver, we always have the ability to modify a waiver as been granted or reconsider it. And all, and, but other than that, let's, let's find out more about the section that you're talking about with respect to future parking and what's required of it.
We, we have a section called future parking that says you may allow a number of reduction as long as there's an area clearly shown reserved for future parking and a prohibition of any structural improvement in that area. Future parking shall be designed, and this is the big thing, including all drainage ways and structures and should be required to be constructed if deemed necessary. What we don't have here is the necessary part, the necessary drainage improvements that would go along with that future parking. That's additional work in order to meet the requirements of the regulations for future parking that has not been done to this date.
I'll waive that part.
It's what he, but the applicant testified that he had taken that account.
Note, to clarify, I said I just took into account impervious area.
Not the actual drainage structures and improvements that would be required to do that parking.
Anyway, it's, again, it's not the hill that I want to die on, but I would waive that part of the requirements for that part of the plan in order to have that show on the plan. I think that's the better route forward, because otherwise the future parking doesn't exist until they come back here for approval, whether it's in the file or not. If they try to build new parking spaces, they're coming to a planning board meeting. But, again...
So, let me clarify. If we require these additional spaces to be on the plan, they're not required to build them initially.
That's right.
But they're just there so that if they...
But we need to have them designed so that we know, if, if, if we want future parking to be able to just be a go without coming back to the planning board, I'm going to tell Kevin and Meridian, I need to see all the drainage design that goes along with that.
And then you can require it to be built.
Correct.
Then I'm fine with the amendment.
So, you want to show the spaces?
Yes.
Alistair, are you okay showing the spaces?
Well, I suppose if it's anyway the thing's going to get passed, I'll go along with it. I disagree with my colleagues who want it, but I will let the amendment go through.
Okay, so, we've amended the motion that Alistair initially made to include all the conditions in the memo, all the ones discussed tonight, including this showing future parking spaces which are roughly in the area of, called a sack on the plan.
So, is the board now modifying the previously granted waiver to now be following the requirements of future parking, or is the waiver still good?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. I would like to say that we are not going to alter the waiver. That's my condition for going along with the change.
Lynn, are you okay with that as part of the motion?
Does that mean that we show the future parking on the plan?
I'm conflicted, that's conflicting. It's a directly conflicting one of them.
No, it's not conflicting at all. Let's not make this more complicated than it is. We've given them a waiver for 100 spaces, that's what they've got to build. They've, in addition to that, they've got to show on their plan where some additional spaces will be, period.
And that's what I'm, that's what I'm, that's what I'm going along with. That's my amendment.
I mean, we've done this at Dunkin' Donuts on Continental Boulevard. We've done this at the thing at, at Exit 11, the big apartment buildings that were just approved there. To act like this is some kind of a complicated thing...
To be clear, then, I don't need to require them to provide all the drainage information that would be necessary required.
No, you do not.
No.
Okay.
But if they build them, or if they want to build them, then they have to provide.
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Deal with it.
We straight on the motion? Everybody straight on the motion? Any questions for the discussion, disagreement? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? I didn't see what you did, no. Which, which end were you on?
In favor.
Favor, so that is 6, 600, no, it's fine.
That's fine.
Thank you, okay. You are approved. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Okay, item four on agenda, Synergy Self-Storage LLC is the applicant and owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of site plan review for modifications to the previously approved site plan regarding access and parking. The parcels located at 403 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial, Oxford Conservation and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts. A portion of the parcel is subject to the flood hazard conservation district. It is tax map 4D3 lot 84-1. Tim, where do we stand?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If the board recalls, this was last in front of the board back in March as a request for a waiver of full site plan review. At that meeting, the planning board determined that the project was incomplete and that it needed to be resubmitted as a full site plan. The applicant has now come back to the board with some engineered site plans to address the, to attempt to address the conditions on the site. This has not been reviewed by peer review. We do not have escrow, so we have not had that reviewed. There are also, as I've explained to the applicant who came into the office last week, because this is being submitted as a full site plan review, the expectation from staff is to review it as such. So, there are a number of missing sheets that would typically be part of a site plan that were not submitted as part of this project, that the board will need to consider a couple of alternatives as to how to deal with that. Ultimately, I think they, they've attempted to address the concerns. Now, it's up to the board to determine whether they have done so.
Thank you, Tim, for the introduction. Please introduce yourself and tell us where we're at with the project.
Good evening, my name is Doug McGuire and I'm with the debate group and I'm here representing the applicant, Synergy Self-Storage. I, I think what we'd like to do tonight is we'd like to heed the recommendation of Mr. Thompson and request a continuance. That was his recommendation within his memorandum. There are a number of items that we feel that we can work with staff on to address. And I believe if we were given a continuance to the September meeting, it would allow us an opportunity to work directly with staff and iron out some of these remaining items. Because as Tim stated, there are some, you know, this is a little bit of a unique situation, but he had some suggestions in his memorandum as to how to address some of those items based on, you know, referral to previously approved plans or, or asking for a waiver if deemed necessary. So, I reviewed all the comments and I, I really didn't have any issue with those and I thought that we could address those, just didn't have an opportunity to address them prior to tonight. So, if the pleasure of the board was to grant us that continuance, I believe we can come back with a cleaned-up letter from staff.
So, our next meeting is August 21st and then after that it's September... We don't, do we do one around Labor Day, or...
The recommendation was September 4th.
September 4th is what I recommended, the first meeting in September.
Yeah, but that's the day after Labor Day.
We've typically skipped that. No, we don't. We, only November and July are the only months with one meeting.
Oh, sorry, oh.
So, we do meet on the Tuesday after Labor Day. September 4th works for you guys?
Yeah, I think that gives us enough time to do that.
Sounds good. Thank you for doing that. Does it help you to have any discussion here tonight about a couple of, because I think you've got a couple of these things right already?
As staff, I think we could use the direction from the board, so that would shape our discussions as we move forward.
Sure, yeah.
I think that would help. So, for my benefit, I think the, the six or so parking spaces in the north, northeast corner that were off the site onto the next one, the solution to do four parallel spaces, now, I think that's perfect. It's right on exactly what you should do. I like the signs and the striping along the northern boundary where the cars seem to be parking today. I don't know if there's any kind of a standard way for marking a fire lane so that people know that it's, I don't know if it's stripes or what you do, but I like, like the idea. I didn't know this before, I didn't notice it, but I guess right at the junction between where there are spaces along that northern edge and where there's not supposed to be, it looks like there's a tiny, tiny little bit of overlap into the neighbor's yard. That's, I didn't notice that before, but as, same with the other one, that's got to somehow get addressed and resolved. Whether you've worked that out with the neighbor or something like that, and I'd probably...
The applicant's already started that discussion and we are going to obtain an easement for that minor encroachment. And honestly, that was the purpose of doing this as-built survey, was to determine if and where there were any issues that needed to be cleaned up. So, we're working on getting that part fixed as well.
Perfect, excellent. So, I'd want to see that when you come back. Those kinds of things, I think, are well on their way to being addressed and resolved. On the vehicle, outdoor vehicle storage area, I think the choice to make it not a fire access road allows you a lot of flexibility in what you've got going forward. You've got a drawing of some drainage that is in an easement on the neighbor's property. Have you had a chance to meet with the neighbor to find out whether they're amenable to that?
We, we have and they are willing to work with us on that. And as part of the expansion of this plan set, I will be adding a grading and utility plan to this. When we come back, you'll have that. It will be a third sheet at a minimum, which will detail how all the grading... In fact, that was actually done, if you recall, when I came the first time. I had had some proposed grading and, well, actually it was the existing grading, but just explaining how that area was going to be captured and we had a drainage analysis associated with that. So, that's going to be all wrapped into this package.
Good. So, in addition to kind of orally representing that the neighbors are amenable to it, any kind of a letter from them or something that says, you know, that they're, though, I don't have to see an easement language or something like that, although you guys have to draw one up. Ultimately, our approval would require that the easement language be submitted to the town's legal council for approval and that would, but that's later down the road, not for me or these folks to kind of spend our time on. But some indication that you've actually got the neighbors on board with that stuff. I like the, the grading plan and the drainage plan that you're talking about developing or the utilities plan. I think that that would be helpful. The fire department has asked about the provision of lighting down here. I'm not sure how much sense that makes.
Police Department.
Police Department, I'm sorry, not fire department. I, I'm not sure from an engineering standpoint how easy it is to accomplish that or not. I know what the police are after and...
I can speak to that, Joel Sicola from Synergy. Actually, that, we did already address that with PSNH or Eversource. They did come out and they, on each one of those utility poles that's there, there is some floodlights owned by Eversource that are in place, existing.
Okay. That helps to have the light that satisfies the police. In a full site plan, you've got to deal with whether the light spills over your site onto the neighbor's site, or else you've got to ask us for a waiver of the provisions that require that you don't have your light spill over. So, sort that out one way or another. Either get us a plan for what the lighting is and what it does, or get us a request for a waiver so that we, you don't have to submit those things. And I think that the argument is pretty much what you said. It's that these don't belong to us, PSNH put lights on their poles. Let me do about it.
Yeah.
You know? Generally speaking, though, there are some pretty tight restrictions on having light shine off of your site onto somebody else's. And you've got a little narrow area here where that could be really difficult to engineer. And so, it being somebody else's work, pretty good answer. I think that kind, landscaping, anything, anything like that?
I'll take any direction. The, the biggest thing I need to hear from the board Yeah, I'll take any direction. The, the biggest thing I need to hear from the board is whether or not you want this to be sent out to peer review when we do get the information.
I don't know how to interpret drainage structures myself, so I think that's the only choice I have. If you submit drainage plans, it has to be peer reviewed. Yes.
I guess what we would request, Mr. Chair, is, is working, this is a very minor drainage improvement. And obviously, we're at our own, at, at the fault of the applicant. This is a little bit of a complicated situation in that it's already constructed. I felt that doing a full peer review on this may make this whole project a lot more complicated because they're going to be looking at it just like Tim was saying, is by the book, every step of the way. And I think it could be, it could result in a pretty lengthy comment review. My hope was, being that it's already installed and that I can provide direct verification of the before and after of what we were working with, that that's something that we could work with staff on. I mean, obviously, Tim has a lot of experience in doing this, and that's something that he, I don't know if he's comfortable reviewing, but.
Not drainage.
Not drainage? Okay.
So I think there, obviously, we have the ability to waive full site plan review, and we could.
I, I would be okay if the board were to specifically tell me to limit the peer review to solely drainage analysis.
To solely drainage.
That is fine, and that's certainly within the board's purview.
I, I'm with Tim. I don't know how to read drainage plans and understand what they mean to, to know whether they'll work. I also know that separate from the fact that it's already been built, the site to the east and west of the, of the storage area have already had some discussion about drainage situations, yours to theirs, theirs to yours. The Lionel Greenwood Lot four, four D two dash one, I understand that they've had some questions about what's going on drainage-wise. And so with drainage controversy already, I think the only way to, to make it clean so that you don't have these headaches is to just get that peer view. But I agree with Tim that you limit it to purely drainage.
Limiting to the, to drainage addresses my concern completely, so I'm, we're fine with that.
Now, when I say limited to drainage, that reminds me of one other thing that is already in the memo but has to be addressed is the actual entrance onto Wright Avenue needs to satisfy the Department of Public Works requirements for driveways.
What, what we will plan to do is we will pull a permit, after the fact permit for that connection. My thought is, is I, I know right off the cuff, there's going to be certain standards that are not quite met, meaning the minimum twenty-five foot radii as an example. I was, I would hope that potentially this board would be inclined to grant a waiver of that, being that this has now been reduced to a one-way access flow, and it is gated and only for egress purposes only. So, and that's how it's planning to stay and would be conveyed on this site plan. So essentially, what it would be is it would be someone comes in, they want to pick up their vehicle that they're storing at the facility as the accessory used to the self-storage. They go into the office, coordinate that. The, the employees go down, open the gate for them and let them leave, and that's the limitation of, of how that access is being used. So it's going to be a very low-used access point. So hopefully, you know, the, the access as it is, it's very close to what it was existing as a gravel. They were matching, their intent was to match that existing condition.
So it looks like the, the westerly apron does have at least a twenty-five foot radius. It's a very gradual radius there. You probably meet the requirement on that one. It's just the easterly apron, correct?
Yeah.
Are there other aspects that are not clear?
I haven't gone through all the requirements. I'm sure there's more items that may potentially be substandard, but that's something that we, if we can address them, obviously, we will, but.
So here's what I'll personally throw out and see what the rest of the board thinks. If DPW believes that whatever the deficiency is, is safety-related, we're going to hold you to it. And if it's not safety-related, then I'll give you all, I'll bend over backwards, give you all the relief I can. Does that make sense? If it's not, does anyone have a different thought about that?
I agree with you.
So work with DPW, and, and as long as they're not labeling it as safety-related. And I mean, obviously, that means that they've got to deal with plows or whatever they've got to do as they pass it by and, and all of that. Does that make sense? Tim, does that sound okay? Any other discussion on that or other parts of it? Do you have other questions for us?
No, I think that, that's, that's good direction, and we can wrap this, move forward and wrap these items up.
One more thing. Is it realistic to expect that we can get this peer review, get the design, the drainage design done, if it's not done, or submitted for peer review?
I was going to suggest if we're going to do peer review, we probably want to add and do the September eighteen meeting.
Yeah, it just seems too tight.
Just to make sure that we have enough time, not only for the meetings to take place, to get the plans to where we need to be, the submission, the escrow.
The peer review and then the corrections and so on.
I think that's a good suggestion.
You're going to need that time. Yeah.
Okay. So when it comes time to make a motion for continuance, the same for the second September, the eighteenth. Any other discussion?
I just had a question about the, that's only accessible.
Turn your microphone on.
That's only going to.
That's only going to be accessible for people that have storage over there?
Strictly for people that have, have an RV stored on that, on that access road. Typical self-storage customer would not have any access or rights to use that.
So at the beginning of it, on the north side, north end of the road, that's gated as well?
It, it's not gated. There, there'll be, there'll be signage there that states specifically that this is what this access road is for.
And they wouldn't be able to leave through that way because it would be a gate that they, is not operable to them.
Right, so if they did accidentally go down there, then they'd just be backing all the way up.
Yeah, well, or there's, there's room for them to turn around in, in one of the open spaces or so forth.
Okay. You have to pass through a gate to get there in the first place, so, yeah, the earlier gate.
The only way they can get out of there is if somebody at Synergy goes down and opens it.
Opens it.
Correct.
Or, or they've got to turn around.
Open it to those that are appropriate.
That's correct.
Or they turn it around.
Well, we're not going to open it. They just go back there.
It just, this doesn't really pertain to too much, but I was just looking at the, the, the design here. What's that little, where the parking spots curve in in the middle of the roadway there? Like spots one-ten, one-eleven, one-twelve, one-thirteen, it's much narrower?
No. There's a, there's a utility pole there, if my memory serves me right.
Actually, on the.
Oh, sorry.
In the west, you're talking on the west side of the, the road there where it curves in?
Yeah.
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 That's existing, like kind of a, a drop-off right there. So that's actually the line of pavement.
So that drops off what, away from the property?
Correct.
Yes, but it drops into wetland.
So is there any plan to, to do any kind of drainage on that side as well?
Not on that side, on the high side there, because all of that pavement there actually slopes to the.
Other way.
To the east.
Okay. Except for that one spot where.
Direct, directly into weather.
Right, but the actual pavement surface itself slopes to the east.
Okay, I see.
The grading plan that we'll submit will be making that clear. We had one-foot contours on that, so you'll actually be able to see that, even though, you know, basically, it's sloping from west to east. So you'll, you'll be able to see that, that's kind of how the drainage is flowing.
Thank you.
Let me throw one more challenge at you that we were talking about before, and that is, in terms of your outdoor vehicle storage, I'm concerned, let's make sure that we're dealing with vehicles that aren't leaking oil or broken down or anything like that. So we're talking about operable vehicles, registered, inspected, if it's a trailer, you know, licensed.
Oh, yeah.
You know, whatever it is.
No junk cars.
No, no junk cars, but also trucks and trailers that, that the trailer itself is used to store, you know, excess materials for, I don't know, a painter or whatever. That whatever those materials are, are not flammable, and they're all treated right. And I don't know the best way to describe that stuff to make sure we don't have, you know, a, a truck that's leaking, I don't know, anything, fertilizer, doesn't have to be toxic, but just.
Anything.
Virtually anything.
If I, if I can be, if I can be blunt here, we, we are kind of particular about our, our typical customer. So if, if someone were to come in with, you know, let's say, a vehicle of, of that, of that caliber, we would politely say that we didn't have space available.
I mean, I, I, I know that. I mean, I look at your building. It's a great-looking building, and you guys do keep your site nice and clean. Sometimes you may not know. I mean, you may have somebody who comes in and says, I just want to park my, my company truck there, and you didn't know that he had a bunch of lawn mowers with gas cans locked up inside the trailer.
We do have, we do have provisions in our, in our lease agreement that does specifically state that as well.
Okay. So without being as lengthy as your lease agreement probably is, put a note on the plan describing what acceptable outdoor storage vehicles are.
Sure.
To you. And, and we'll, we'll kind of take a look at that stuff. In that vein of being operable, licensed, registered, not storing toxics or flammables, I don't know what else you have in your lease.
Mr. Chairman, could I take your point one, could I take your point one stage further? When we were wandering around the site for SRS Petroleum, I noticed there were some containers in some of these bays. What's in those containers?
There, there's two, actually, three, three containers there, and it's a, those are a, a storage customer who opted to supply their own, own storage space for whatever reason. They didn't want to use the storage unit. So it's, it's household goods in a, household goods and furnishings in a storage container, essentially.
So there's no vehicles or any.
No.
All right.
Thank you.
I know that obviously a, a storage container like that that's on the ground doesn't qualify as a vehicle, and it can't be registered and meet those other things that I was talking about. To me, it's a lot like a MyBox. I mean, as long as you know what's inside of it, if they can have one, why can't you? And if yours is metal and theirs is not, I don't care about that. But some way of identifying and knowing what's in it with the restrictions that you're talking about here. And I think that you guys have the right mind frame because of what, the, the way you care about your site. And I'm sure that you also don't only be responsible for getting oil out of that wetland if it leaks out of somebody's trailer, because it will be your problem, not your customers, so.
And you guys regularly are down there.
Yeah, yeah, there's.
Yeah, you're going to keep an eye on things.
There's daily inspections down on that road, or there's somebody from the office, either myself or, or Chris, or one of the employees is down there on a daily basis anyway, so.
Thank you.
Is there a way of requiring that vehicles stored there be registered?
I think there is.
I don't know how you do it.
I mean, I don't know how we would enforce it.
You could, I was going to say, you could condition it such, I, I'm not going to go enforce it unless I.
I'm just saying, if somebody brings their, their RV down there now and stores it and.
Sits for ten years?
Leaves, leaves it there for ten years. Is there anything to prevent that?
I, I think, you know, maybe we could put a term limit on it. I mean, that, because I know there, there is, has been times where that has happened. A customer has, has stored a, a trailer there, and the registration has expired, let's say, in October, and then they don't need it until June.
I'm not worried about October to June. I'm worried about two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-four.
So I'm sure we could put some kind of term limit on that.
Because if somebody abandons a vehicle there, then you might have an issue with.
The potential for weekend.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. If, if it was to get to that point, it would be treated as a traditional storage unit where after sixty-five days, if there's no payment, you know, the storage unit gets auctioned off in, in case.
I'm still paying it, but I'm just leaving it there.
When it starts leaking, you can call her up.
Well, yeah, I think that.
I mean, that's an issue.
That would be the.
Right.
I mean, if. Rare, but it could be an issue.
If it's sat there for eight years, but it was in perfectly fine condition and wasn't leaking or anything, I, I don't think that would be as much of a concern.
No, but if it's sitting there for eight years, and I'm paying the bill, and it's leaking, then what's the issue?
Again, as soon as, as soon as we, you know, were to discover any kind of leak or anything that, that wasn't, wasn't right, it would be addressed immediately. You know, whether it means, you know, having it towed away and, and the cost borne by the customer or whatever.
And you have the capability of doing that?
That is correct.
Okay. I'm fine.
Excellent. Any other questions about what, what constitutes kind of outdoor vehicle storage and what's appropriate there? We had a different project, a different site, where it was a auto body shop that wanted a lot where they could store the damaged vehicles while they were waiting in line to be fixed, and we didn't allow that. Those kinds of things because a vehicle that's been in an accident is leaking almost by definition. So same goes for you guys. Those aren't, that wouldn't be considered a outdoor vehicle storage to, you know, do overflows. I don't think that you got enough spaces, but we had a different proposal once to consider whether a car dealership could put new cars as a storage site. That would fit, I think, perfectly in with what you're, you're considering and approving here. So, does that make sense? Okay. Any other discussion about the, where the status of things, anything, feedback that we want to provide the applicant before we send him on his way for a month? Are you guys happy?
Just a reminder that the motion is for both the acceptance and the public hearing, whoever makes the motion.
Okay. And then we are ready for a motion, and as Tim indicated, the appropriate motion is to continue to September eighteenth. Both the acceptance and the public hearing on the application in chief.
I will so move.
Motion by Lynn to continue as appropriate to eighteenth.
Only public notice.
Second by Nelson. Was that? No further public notice?
Correct.
Anything else you need in the motion, Tim? Okay, so we've got that motion from Lynn, second by Nelson. If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero. Thank you all. You guys are really doing a good job of putting some clarity on what was getting complicated for a while, so. Thank you.
We want to thank the board for being patient with us.
Absolutely. Glad to do it. That brings us to item five on our agenda, which is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. And bulleted on my notes here is the continued discussion of the New Hampshire Municipal Association Services and recommendations to the Town Council for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty town budget. Last time we met, I think we were bare bones, me, Nelson, Alastair, and Tom. And we were sort of preaching to the choir in terms of what we thought, in terms of the support for Merrimack being a member of the New Hampshire Municipal Association. In the package for that meeting, Tim had supplied a bunch of materials about what services they provide, and I think that he was also able to get us a vague sense of what the cost was.
Roughly twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars per year.
For our town to be a member. And the tenor of the discussion is whether the board would make a recommendation or a suggestion or, or convey to the Town Council our encouragement to consider putting membership back in the budget so that we could be a member of the New Hampshire Municipal Association. Now, we didn't make a decision at the last meeting because we were kind of dealing with the people who are already preaching to the choir and thought a fuller discussion could be had with more members. So now we have more members. I, with that, I'll shut up and see where the discussion takes us.
Go ahead. No, you go ahead.
You had your hand up first.
I have a fairly significant experience with this. I will tell you, we are one of the few towns, if not the only one, that is not a member. I will also tell you that the fee schedule at the municipal association does not encourage us to be members. A lot of the things that they provide are valuable for small towns who do not have staff, who do not have. Legal counsel, who do not have experience to provide a town council, a board of selectmen, or planning board, or anybody else with knowledge that they need in order to do things. And so they have to go to the municipal association to say, what do I do about this? And so the municipal association provides them with expertise that we, as a town, do not always need. I will tell you that there is some significant training, seminars, opportunities for a lot of other things that would in fact be valuable for us. But it's a trade-off between the expense, which is reasonable for small towns, which I don't consider reasonable for us. And that's not to say that I don't think we should belong, because I think the, the training and the seminars and those things that are provided would be invaluable to us from not only planning, zoning, elections, land use. There's, there's all kinds of things that are, are very, very valuable there. And I've told municipal association that they tried, that they're trying to charge us too much, and they ought to be charging us less. And if they charged us less, we would probably belong. But, but the expense of that, but still, I think the, the benefits that we would get are valuable, whether it's worth the twenty or twenty-five thousand, probably not. But I still think it's worth considering joining because there is some, some significant expertise there that.
Speaking just as a planning board member, taking away everything else, it would be beneficial for you, is basically what I'm hearing.
Absolutely, absolutely. But is it worth the cost?
That's their decision.
That's their decision. But yes, it, it is absolutely worth joining to get the experience and the expertise that we need. And I understand, I've, I've been involved with this for a very, very long time, from a variety of venues, that I understand the difference. It, it's worth belonging.
I was going to say is that I think it would be beneficial most for that reason, with the training and, and such that. Like for myself, just going to that last one was informative, and it was, it was talking to a couple of people. It was something that, it's an avenue that I could go to. You know, another one, just to, you know, gain better knowledge of, of what's going on, utilize the, the, the programs and whatnot. But I, I have a question. It's, it's not just the planning board that can utilize this? Who, who else?
If, if the town as a whole were to join and become a member of the municipal association, staff and board members would then have the ability to access the services, like the law lectures, the conferences, and things of that nature.
All the staff of the town?
Staff, all the staff.
Yeah, the municipal association doesn't just deal with planning and zoning and land use.
It's everything.
They have got information.
It's municipal government from soup to nuts.
Yep.
Okay. Libraries and all sorts of things.
Yep.
Um, road maintenance and things.
So in that, I mean, you know, with that, also, it seems like it'd be, it could be utilized by, I mean, if it can be utilized by everybody.
We, we were members when I first started working for the community seven years ago. Uh, the decision was made during one of the budget cycles, I want to say it was either twenty-twelve or twenty-thirteen, to not continue, uh, with membership. Uh, at the time, I had one of my employees signed up for law lectures, she was able to go to one, then they realized we weren't members and said she's no longer welcome to come to our sessions.
And as an organization, as much as it seems sort of tough to tell somebody, "You can't, you can't come, even if you want to pay for that lecture if you're not a member," that's how they make people become members. I mean, if you're not a part of the club, you don't get to come to the club meetings.
And there is a lot of value to those things that they do provide.
They do provide some excellent education and things. One, I, I agree with the notion that Lynn was kind of suggesting, that as a bigger town, we've got our own legal counsel and we can ask our lawyer questions if we want to, and we don't need to ask them of the municipal association. However, um, sometimes an organization like the municipal association is pushing information out that we didn't even know was a question. And so we haven't even asked the question yet, but they've put it in journal or a publication or they're holding a session about it, and we didn't even know that there was a new something to deal with.
One of the biggest things I missed, we're not members anymore, are the legislative updates that were coming bi-weekly.
Yeah. Yeah, what's happening in the world and what do I have to deal with coming, going forward and.
And, and they do a lot of lobbying for the municipal, for the municipalities. They say, "What do you need, what do you want us to lobby for as far as RSA's, as far as changes?" They go in and they fight for those things that we, as a town, need to have changed and need to have modified. And they're actively working on that on a, on a weekly basis during the legislative session.
They do, but they also struggle with, um, building consensus among the municipalities because they can't lobby for things if.
Right.
If eight towns say, "I hate it," and the other town, you know, like, for example, the, um, the law that passed about auxiliary dwelling apartments.
Yep.
Um, for us, fine with us, we already had them, we already embraced them, we thought it was a great idea, let's go pass it. There's a bunch of towns that thought that was a terrible, I mean, you fight tooth and nail and they're angry and I'm not going to vote for that representative anymore because you.
Not in my backyard.
Passed that bill, right? And so, you know, from the municipal association, they were probably kind of stuck on that particular one where they didn't have.
And there are those issues, but, but they do do a lot of lobbying and they are very effective in a lot of avenues.
The one thing that I caution about the municipal association, because they represent a bunch of municipalities, when they publish a legal opinion about something, um, it sort of takes on an air of being actual legal authority for something, and it's nothing better than their lawyer's opinion.
That's right.
And it may be a great opinion by somebody that's practiced in municipalities and really experienced it.
Good as somebody else's legal opinion.
But he didn't have a black robe.
Yep.
And those guys with the black robes are the only ones whose opinions actually count.
Yep.
So, anyway.
I guess the, um, the thing, I guess, on the other end that I would be concerned with is, who's, who, how many people are going to utilize it in the, in the, for the, you know, the staff?
A lot of people.
Everybody, I mean, all of a sudden, we just say, "Oh, yeah, we're a member," and then people just automatically go use that as a resource? Are they aware of it? Do they know it's there? Like, what's the?
I can't give you historical trends from Merrimack because I wasn't here long enough, but every other community I've worked for has been a member of the association. I particularly, earlier in my career, utilized their services a lot more than I would now. Um, it's, they're, the, most of their law lecture stuff, unless it's a topic that hasn't already been covered by the planners' association or something like that, it's definitely more in tune with board members than it would be with professional staff, at least in my department. I can't say the same, but I know that for assessors and tax collectors, there's a lot of great training that they do that I'm sure would be utilized heavily by the staff. But, you know, my own experience, I've had very limited interaction personally outside of their annual conference, which I used to go to all the time, uh, but outside of that, I really didn't, I myself didn't utilize.
I, I agree with Tim that, that the higher-level staff, um, has their own associations that provide a lot of that expertise. And again, that's the difference between a large town and a small town.
There absolutely is, but also.
But there are some lower-level staff that, and, and members of different boards that would benefit hugely from a lot of the training because they're, they're newer.
I mean, even getting, um, some basic legal advice from the municipal association that they've published for the whole spectrum of towns, instead of going to pay our lawyer by the hour for it. I think I remember when the PFOA thing first happened and there was a desire, no, it was, um, the gas pipeline, there was a desire to write a letter to the siting commission down in Washington. I don't, I'll get this wrong, but I think before we turned around twice, there was a forty-thousand-dollar legal bill to ship off a letter. And, and not that the municipal association could have handled that level of work, but when you get into legal issues where you're paying the lawyer directly, the price is, the meter runs damn fast.
And you wouldn't know, see?
Guilt, guilt is charged.
I wouldn't have been surprised you opened that door, but still.
Guilt is, well, that's the value in getting some legal advice that's prepared for groups like that, is that you're sharing that cost with other folks.
But the fact that you can pick up the phone, call them, and talk to somebody in legal, and you might not take that as gospel, but at least it gives you some information, they'll give you pros and cons, they'll give you their impression, and then you can take that and use that to make, or Tom can use it, to make a, a decision on his own part as to whether he wants to pursue it with our legal counsel or, you know, what's involved with that. The fact that you pick up the phone, call them, and you talk to them.
And I.
Has a lot of value.
I don't want to speak out of turn, and this is kind of, I guess, a question more for Tom. When the decision was made to not be part of the municipal association, wasn't that still during the time when the whole health trust and property liability, they were all still co-mingled? And they were having all kinds of issues with that?
That's, that's behind them. It's behind them now.
Just anecdotally, I'll add that I did use the municipal association legal resources way back when, when I was chairman of the budget committee, those of you that remember budget committees in town. Um, because at that time, I was having a tip with the then-town council, town board of selectmen, um, as to how we could handle things with the budget committee, and didn't feel like I was going to have access to legal counsel through the town, but I did have access to legal counsel through the municipal association. So while we don't have a budget committee anymore and we don't have that kind of an issue, um, it had been personally useful to me to have that access, um, and I think it would be useful to other people in town as well, as necessary, but not, I mean, the, like, like the conservation commission or, uh, any of those kinds of committees or boards if they, you know, are, are having an issue and they want to just get some advice about how can we handle this best, other than the standard advice of sit down and just work it out. It is useful. I, I argued to stay in, and so I, I can't add a lot to this, um, discussion other than that. I think we should be a part of it, from my own experiences.
Okay, so I think that's, that's a fairly developed discussion. It seems like the consensus is that the planning board audit give an indication to the town council that we encourage consideration of it in the budget, is it to the council first or to the administration first?
What I would simply do is I, if, if the motion were to state such, is to be, would be to prepare a memo on behalf of the board outlining the board's desire and consideration in the budget process that the town rejoin NHMA.
I will, I will make that motion.
I will second that motion.
Lynn makes that motion.
Who would the member be to, Tim?
It would be to.
It would be to Eileen.
Aye.
Eileen.
Okay.
Okay. It could also go to the chair of the.
Oh, it would be copied to the council, so.
Yeah.
Anytime I said anything to Eileen, I'd copy the council.
Okay, so this is going to be from you or from me?
It was assuming I, I'm not in a position, it would be the board's decision.
So the board's authorizing, the motion is that we would write such a memo.
Authorize the memo on behalf of the chair.
Okay. I'm happy with that idea. Any discussion?
Good.
Nelson's voting all affirmative.
What's that?
I mean.
Second by Nelson.
Alastair is voting affirmative.
Yeah, I'm saying yes, well, I was saying yes ten minutes ago.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? One abstaining. Counsel Koenig.
But he already said he was in favor of it.
That's true, but he's also going to be making the decision.
He can't vote.
Yeah, making a recommendation to himself over at the council. It's the same spot you sit in there for two, isn't it? Um, does anybody else have any other items of discussion or concern?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, on Sunday, as a result of driving through town, I counted twenty-one banner signs, six of which are at the, um, tire place nearest the brewery. There's several, three or four around on the Italian restaurant just down here, but there are twenty-one banner signs floating, of which four of them were actually for the, uh, the, where we scratch tickets and all that rubbish. There were none of those were, well, I have discounted my twenty-one, the ones that are look-like or meant to look like the, the flag of the United States.
So did you take them all down?
Well, can I, let me keep going. We either had, in my book, and I know what Tim's going to say, he doesn't really want to go around pulling them all down, we have to make a decision, and I know this has fallen foul of one particular counselor who is no longer on the council. We either have to make a decision that we're going to uphold the sign ordinances, which means they should all get warning letters, or we don't uphold the sign ordinances. This sort of current situation where we have a sign ordinance and don't stick, don't enforce it, and I know Tim's not excited. I think we have to make a decision. I'm not saying we necessarily make a decision now, and maybe we have to involve the council because.
I'm not, and I, I'll interrupt. I'm not saying I won't enforce it. Until I have a physical service request for them, I can't enforce it.
Well, I can write you a, a service request for, for all of them.
And as soon as we have a service request, we will move forward through our enforcement process.
They go, Alastair, that's what you do.
There it is. Make your answer, Alastair.
All right.
That's simple.
I, I simply cannot with the staff I have dedicate full-time enforcement. I can only react to what is reported. I cannot spend the time.
Alastair, twenty-one service requests.
I will send you a service request with all the signs on. Leave it to me, you'll get it by the end of the week.
All right. Any other discussion?
Kelly and Robert will thank you.
Actually, Robert won't thank me, but there we are, because the last request I put in, he wasn't happy with it, but then, well, we won't go into that.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to bring up, um, driving down Continental Boulevard, I noticed that the MyBox building, um, has stacks and stacks of, uh, containers all around the building. And I wasn't here for the approval of that building or anything like that, but from what I understand, that it was, it was conditional approval based on that they don't have, the boxes stacked up all around the building. It's not correct?
No, they are allowed to use the parking spaces that are in excess on the site to store MyBoxes.
They are?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure that.
Oh, we've had that question come up several times.
Because it's unsightly and they're stacked pretty high, and I don't know what the, what, what the regulation is on how high it can stack a MyBox, but, um, it just, it just doesn't seem right.
What meeting was it where we discussed that? Because I thought we talked about at least putting them in the back and ma- making the site look presentable.
We talked about the dumpsters, was what we talked about recently.
Those have been fixed.
Yeah, which they did move, I noticed they moved those.
And I thought ultimately they've got the building on DW Highway where MyBox can be inside.
Eventually, their headquarters will be moving to the, the Herrick Road, Herrick Street and, uh, DW Highway. And my understanding is that a lot of that stuff will be moved at that stage. But yes, the, the current site on Continental Boulevard does allow for the use of, there's specific areas designated as outdoor storage, and it does specifically say that parking spaces in excess are allowed to be used for storage of MyBoxes.
Can anybody remember when we heard that one, it was before you were on here, got a year ago, huh?
Let's see, this, I don't know if I have a date on the thing we were working on earlier.
Oh, yeah.
It's just off of the plane, it's nineteen thousand sixteen, nineteen seventy-five.
I would have said it was, I would have said early part, late part of sixteen or early part of seventeen.
The statement that's on the plane here looks like July.
Sixteen?
Yes, that's more right, that's probably right.
So we'll take a look through those minutes online and see what, can I review and refresh? Discuss. Um, any other items of concern or discussion, any other desires for service requests or anything like that? The thunder stopped, so at least we can get out of here whole.
Yeah.
Um, all right, so wherever I find my agenda here, we've got a set of minutes to approve. It is the minutes of July seventeenth, twenty eighteen.
I'm hoping approve as distributed?
Motion to approve as distributed, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it, Mr. Chairman, I didn't, couldn't find anything wrong with it.
Wow.
Any other discussion on the minutes of July seventeenth, twenty eighteen? Seeing none, all in favor of approving them as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? One abstention for Neil Anketell. Um, so that is five, zero, one to approve those minutes, and that concludes the business on our agenda today.
Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second? Yes, we'll figure that part out in a second. So Lynn seconds the motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Uh, six, zero, zero to adjourn. Thank you, everyone, don't forget to turn your microphones off.